Good evening. I'd like to call our Budget and Finance Subcommittee to order. Mr. Malaney?
... summary, as well as our projected expenditures for the rest of the year, including any projected surpluses and deficits in any lines. Starting with the academic classroom teachers, we've expended $22,795,914 through September, excuse me, through, I should say March, I should say March 31st, I apologize. With the remaining balance of 44% left, our projected expenditures for 4-1 to 6-30 would be $18,957,462, which would leave us a $749,625 deficit. As you know, we just settled the teacher's contract recently. These new numbers now reflect the annual raise, the 3% raise, plus the retroactive on the amounts that were paid throughout the year. We had an amount put into reserve that was budgeted to us from the mayor's office and approved by you folks that we put into reserve, and that was to be used to pay off the raises for all of the, all the potential raises. So, a deficit in these lines should not be all that concerning. We expected them anyway, but there'll be plenty of money in the reserves to cover them. The longevity, we've expended $112,212. We anticipate $258,800 more with a deficit of $227,012. The longevity, we use for two things. One, it's the longevity that they're paid out to the teachers based on their years of service. And then the other is also, we use it for paying out the 30 days of a retired teacher when they retire from us at the end of, if they have more than 20 years with us. We're anticipating that we could have upwards of 20 to 25 retirees this year. So, we're budgeting that amount, or anticipating that amount, and it's spread throughout the longevity for classroom teachers and academic programs. And then of the reserve, there was $1.6 million in reserves. None of that has been spent yet, so that's available to go off against those deficits. So, for academic classroom teachers, all things combined, in the final column, we're anticipating a net surplus of $670,000, $670,624. For academic programs, again, the instructional line, we've expended $14.8 million with $10.85 left available. We're anticipating projected expenditures of $11,575,000. So, that'd be a deficit of $720,000. The longevity is above, I mentioned, we anticipate those additional 20 to 25 retirees. So, we anticipate a deficit of $137,559. And the reserve has not been expended, so that $1,032,000 will go against those deficits and leave us with a surplus in that area of $174,269. For the academic support, there are many more things. First, the instructional line item, we're anticipating a deficit of $296,867. Again, that's mostly due to contractual obligations with the QEA. Clerical, we're anticipating a $10,505 surplus, small surplus in the superintendent line. The assistant superintendent line, there'll be a deficit of $16,700. We hadn't touched that line item in the past three years, so it didn't reflect the actual contractual amount, and we didn't do that because we didn't have any amounts in that for that period. So, that reflects the actual expenditure. For the directors, we anticipate a $21,932 deficit, and that's the result of two items, increase in curriculum salaries for the two curriculum directors, and an increase in the HR salary of $12,550 that was not budgeted for. The department heads has a significant variance. We're anticipating a deficit of $170,581. The largest portion of that is $84,000, which was a change in the way we restructured athletics. We had two athletic directors, one at each school, that were paid very well below market for an athletic director, and we've actually lost one because of that. We now have one athletic director, and we have two assistant athletic directors, one at each high school. So, that causes the deficit in that line item. The department head for ELL is about a $28,000 increase, and that's contractual with the QEA. Increase in health services of $14,000, and the homeless coordinator, the amount was, that's being paid, has not changed, but there's been a decrease in the funding from the McKenna-Vinto grant, so we had to absorb that in our budget. And then the final amount was an increase in coordinator salaries due to the transportation reorganization. And we have Kevin Segala, who is now going down the bus yard every morning along with Ann Lawson, to make sure the scheduling is done correctly to get the buses out on time. And that's what all of those changes in the department heads are. So, I don't know if anybody would have a question now on it, or just keep on moving. All right. The principals, we expect a deficit of $22,919, and that's due entirely to increase in contractual obligations with the QEA, and that's for the deans and the assistant deans and the deans only because the assistant principals have not settled yet. Group C still hasn't come to the table with us. Work-study, a $5,000 surplus. We don't expect any expenditures. And the reserve of $581,492. All those combined would give us a surplus of $179,541 in academic support. Non-academic support, clerical, we anticipate a deficit of $177,279, and that's due to two things. One, an increase in contractual obligations. That's the SEIU, the settlement with the clerical union. The other is we added an additional hire in the HR department as an administrator. Custodial, a deficit of $174,557, again contractual, the 3% raise, which was not budgeted for. Maintenance and security have small amounts of deficits, $8,615 for maintenance, $8,575 for security. AIDS, a small deficit of $15,584. The attendants and the bus drivers, there were surpluses of $16,733 and $327,569. As we've discussed before, we are, have fewer bus drivers working for us now than we've budgeted for, just like every other community, as we're all out looking for more bus drivers. Would, you know, much prefer to have our drivers driving our children than vending them. Part-time clerical, we anticipate a $16,864 deficit. Longevity, an $8,075, and then the reserve of $188,681, for a total of $177,599. And a total surplus in salaries of $1,202,033. For the expenditures, we've gone through most of them. I'll just hit the highlights. Staff development, we anticipate a small surplus. Library books, a small one. Translation services, as you know, this was a new line that was put in two years ago. We really didn't use it because we're using grant funding. We left it in at $500,000. This year, we anticipate $292,000 surplus. It's something we continue to use more and more of, and we anticipate that, you know, we might want to keep that as a budget discussion later on because it is very useful to us. Professional discretionary fund, we anticipate a $23,678 deficit because of the change in the contractual amounts based on their recently settled contracts. So, we anticipate $289,129 surplus in academic expenses. Non-academic expenses, we anticipate a $199,000 deficit in natural gas. While the heating days were down very much, the cost has gone up, and we're working with Shelley Dean to try and better determine what exactly our costs will be going forward. The city has contracts for several years. Our electricity, we anticipate a $300,407 deficit. Those are the real two big items, and they've been cause for concern in the past. But again, we have plenty of surplus to cover those. And you see some small surpluses. So, all overall, we anticipate a non-academic expenses, a deficit of $384,429. For expenses in total, $95,300. So, our overall surplus currently is anticipated at $1,106,733, due primarily to two things. One, the reserve that was set aside, as well as some mid-year breakage plus leaves of absences that we've had. So, we do have the funds to get us through the year. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you.
You're on.
Okay. The translation services line, is our phone service that has the translation service through it, does that come out of that line, or is that coming out of a different?
That's the same one. We use that through, I believe it's ITC, International Translations Company, and that's part of it, yeah.
Okay, so that does come out of that one. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Begoli?
I know in years past, we've been able to buy a rate at a certain price and have it stable all the way through. Were we able to do that this year with the gas and/or?
They've been coming off cycle now, and there have been, it's been a small increase, but I believe they're all coming up to bid for next year. If I'm right, I'm not, I'm pretty sure it's next year, we're getting a new, new contract.
And who's that with?
The city will, we piggyback the city on that.
Yeah, we can get back to you with the deets on that, Paul. I know the fuel was up this past year. Timing is everything.
Yep.
But, yeah, this, we've got to spend a little time on this to make sure we get a more accurate number for the new fiscal year, Jim.
Right. Well, this will be to get us through, but I think for next year, it's very important to get our usage.
Absolutely. That's my point. Anybody else? Mr. Santoro?
Thank you. Jim, where are we with the electric buses? Are we getting, and if so, have we planned for the increased electrical costs, the installation of the plugs that we're going to need?
We've been working, again, with the city side and Shelley Dean on that. There were two grants to replace four of our buses. We have some four older diesel vehicles that were eligible for grant funding. We received two grants, and part of that is also for the infrastructure. But the problem is, we're looking at where can we put the charging stations, where will we be having the buses, as well as, you know, just logistics for ordering them and everything else. So, it's something we're working. I know the mayor's office is very much involved. We've got Shelley Dean over at Public Buildings, who's basically running all the electrical programs. So, it's in the works. I don't know when exactly we can expect it.
Thank you.
What, and can you, give me a range of costs for the electric vehicle as opposed to what we have now at Gaspar?
They're very expensive. They're coming down a little bit. We're probably estimating that the cost of an electric vehicle would be about $350,000 for a Class A school bus, the large school buses that you see. The last one we bought was $95,000, so it's considerably more expensive, and that's why we really wouldn't be able to look at it unless it was available for those two grant options. One was for $60,000 per vehicle, and the other one, I think, is close to a $3 million grant through the state. So, it gets us more than halfway there on the electrical vehicles.
And what about repair? Are we equipped to repair these vehicles? I mean, if something happens to the battery, we're sunk, basically.
Right now, most of them are done through warranty work, the places that have been doing the vehicles. So, there would be no really onsite repair except for maintenance as far as small systems like windshield wipers and tires and brakes. But when it comes to anything mechanical, that would be warranty work.
Is that included in the cost?
Yes, it is. Typically, a six to 10-year warranty.
Okay, and what's the lifespan? Any idea?
It's a maturing technology. I think you're, hopefully, looking at six to 10 years on them.
Well, I'm looking for the same myself, at least.
I bet some of the buses.
Thank you. Jim, could we use any of that electric bus money to put in some charging stations at our schools?
I don't know. I know part of the program was to look at for just those buses. I know that the new schools that we've had, we put some charging stations in at Southwest, and I'm not sure if there's going to be any charging stations over at the DeCristofaro Center. I'm sure there would be some at Squanam School. We've had talks about putting them into our buildings for other people to use. I think that's obviously, you know, just discussions in general. It would have to go to the school committee first because you'd be having people with vehicles basically trespassing on school grounds and off hours. So, it would have to be something that was seriously looked at by the school committee before we could look at that for outside charging purposes.
Did you say we have some at Southwest now?
Yeah, they're not, they're not on the campus itself. They're on the, on the street or parking lot.
And people pay to use them?
Correct.
And we, so we don't have any more use of them than the neighborhood does?
Correct. They're smaller charges. They wouldn't charge a bus.
One of those buses goes down, that's a serious issue for our transportation. I know you can't anticipate this, but how long would it take to repair that if it's going out somewhere?
We don't know, but we've always worked with having additional larger buses down the bus yard for athletics. One time, many years ago, five vehicles, and these might be the ones that are coming offline, were purchased specifically for athletics in probably 2007, I'm thinking, so that they can come into rotation. If a regular route bus goes down, we can use one of those. But we'd always want to make sure that we have enough vehicles to handle it in case something does go down. These vehicles, we're not sure of the range. We don't know if we'd be sending them out to any distant. I think mostly we'd be using them as vehicles within the city for the regular routes. It'd be, it'd be better for, you know, stop the idling. There would be less fumes around, and it would be something that would be more beneficial to in-city transportation than out-of-city transportation, I would think.
So, you wouldn't be sending them down to Duxbury or?
No, not at present time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else said? Anything to add, Mr. Superintendent?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. My report. Motion, Mr. Santoro to adjourn. All those in favor? Oh, the crowd, we're doing well.
This will be very quick.
The brief version, Mr. Malaney.
Very brief version. Mrs. Lebo asked that we just go over a quick review of the warrant report and basically what it does. I included you a copy of the warrant report, which it says, and also, which you usually don't get, but we do, it works for us to, it's the invoice entry proofless, so we can match what we're putting into the computer against what's being paid. What a warrant report basically does is it's a list of all those bills that we're paying in order for us to have any sort of purchase. First, a budget has to pass, then we allocate the funds to every school or department who has it. Purchases have to be with a purchase order, has to be approved by whatever department head. Oftentimes, Madeline Roy, when it's anything educational, comes through my office for my approval, and goes through the superintendent's office for his approval, goes over to City Hall to purchasing and legal and everything, just to make sure that we're following all the rules. Once that's done, when an invoice is delivered to us, the person signs off on it, says they've got to receive the goods and services, we match against the purchase order, and then we send it over to the city to be paid, and that's what goes on the warrant report. So, it's basically items that have been pre-approved for purchase, and then go on this. This report has a list of all the invoices that we're paying on a particular time, alphabetical order. And then further on, I think on page 35 on this, 37, there's a warrant summary by account number, so you can see how much is being paid out of each various accounts, as well as a proof on the amounts that are paid, and then a voucher detail report. So, basically, all the warrant is, is just approving the payment for invoices that have already been pre-approved, or purchases have been already pre-approved by the proper authorities. I don't know if anybody has any questions on them.
Mr. Begoli?
Do I have to still go up to bid?
Yes, we follow, I was going to do the short version. We follow 30B laws and the city laws procurement procedures, which are stricter. Any item that is over $10,000 is going to require a contract. Anything over $50,000, $30,000, we go up to bid on, with the exception of educational materials, text and supplies is an exception of the 30B for that. Because if the curriculum department decides that this series of math books are the ones that they want to use system-wide, you don't want to say, well, they're selling a cheaper math book, so you've got to use them if it's not applicable, an appropriate book. So, there is an exclusion for that. So, those items that are sole source don't have to go up to bid, or items that either have a contract with the city, like the electrical and the gas, or those items that have a contract with the state of Massachusetts. We can use to buy off of combines or through the inspector general's office, that they already get a good deal for school systems. You notice that when we see what we pay for paper versus what paper is in the store. It's considerably cheaper because the city does a very good job with the procurement policies through Catherine Holbert Logan's office.
Are we required to take the lowest bid?
Lowest reasonable bid, if it's, if you're, if you're buying the same thing, you take the lowest one. If there is something that would distinguish it, you don't always have to take the lowest one. But you take the lowest one when, all things being equal, you're getting the same item.
And you determine that?
The verbiage on that is lowest, but it's going to be apples to apples, and it's going to be quality. So, we went through, we've gone through some of those issues over the years, where it sounds good, and then you experience it. So, there are ways to deal with those issues. Jim mentioned that. We work very well together, the city side and the school side, on purchase of goods and putting things out to bid. It's really a seamless effort. So, essentially, everything gets encumbered. The warrant's the last step, really, just paying the bill.
And, you know, there are, and like I said, apples to apples. I just, one time, we had a problem with, we got the, this was through the custodial services, best deal you could possibly get on toilet paper. And a lot of people didn't like that. It was, you know, so.
It wasn't a job.
No, it was not. So, but we work with the best, the best value and the best, best price for us.
Good?
I'm good.
All right. You jumped again before, Mr. Santoro. You want to make a motion out of adjournment? All those in favor, I oppose, yes, have it. Thank you.
Oh, I'm Frank. Sorry. So, I'm sorry, we're going to have to take the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting out of order. Mr. Guttrow is not here, and he's an important member of our policy subcommittee, so I apologize to you folks for being, for being here and us not being able to discuss this, but there's only two members of that committee here at the moment. So, I'm going to call the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee meeting to order, and if possible, we could have Ms. Roy present the mentoring program review. Ms. Roy, could you check your microphone for me?
Check, check.
Check the other one, too.
Hello? And you're going to do this. All right. Good evening. Thank you. So, tonight, I'm here to give a, and sort of, even though we're not quite at the end of the year, an end-of-year review of the mentoring program for the '22-'23 school year. So, the mentoring program is just one of two key elements of an induction program. And the new professional orientation that many of you have attended before is a part of this. And then formal meetings, mentor meetings during the school year, as well as onsite and jobalike collaboration between a mentor and a protege during the year are also components of an induction program. These are all required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We held our professional staff orientation on August 31st and September 1st, and the mission of our mentoring program is really quite simple. It's to support and elevate the teaching profession and foster a collaborative culture, which should ultimately result in retention of staff. There are specific, there is a regulation, and there are specific standards and guidance that comes from the Department of Education for a teacher induction program, and we meet all of them. You have an orientation program for first-year staff, and that's not just classroom teachers. That could be our student supporter, academic program nurses, anybody who is a professional staff member new to our district. They're all assigned a mentor. We converse with them, meet with them, and support them right away at the beginning of the school year to let them know that their mentor is not the only person who's part of their support group. We make sure that they build relationships with their building administrators, with their program directors and coordinators, their department chairs, and of course, their colleagues, their jobalike colleagues. The other important part of the induction program is that we offer some release time. Principals help tremendously with that to make sure that a mentor can get into a protege's classroom, or vice versa, or a mentor may suggest that they go see somebody else because they have a particular strength that they want to develop in their protege. And as often as we can, we provide coverage, either internally or through substitutes, so that they can, they can have this time together. The department has connected, their regulations have linked licensure to the induction programs that every district in Massachusetts is required to hold, and that is that they have to participate in a program in order to move that next step into a professional license. Now, the district can also have their own requirements about who can, who can or should or be recommended to attend a mentoring program. We have many action steps and some smaller subgoals, but we have landed for the last decade on four key goals, and that is to help teachers improve their practice and our other staff members, who student support, nurses, academic program, learn their professional responsibilities and gain that comfort level so that they can positively affect student learning or student interactions, depending on their role. We want our veteran teachers who become our mentors, we want them not to just give advice, but actually reflect on their own practice and have it be a collaboration so that our veteran teachers who are mentors are actually also moving forward and growing and developing while they're coaching a new staff member. The mentor program, our idea is that we are promoting unity. So, our third goal is that we are all individuals, but we are working together as a district, as a school, as a department, as a grade level, and that you have some key people who can help you in your first year, or even your first three years. And then our last goal is to elevate the teaching profession, or elevate our student support professionals, or our healthcare and nursing staff, our CVTE, to elevate it and bring best practice, and we do that through collaboration. So, a lot of what is embedded in the formal meetings is collaboration and some new information, tips, and strategies. So, I was thinking of Mr. Guttrow when I professionals, or our healthcare and nursing staff, our CVTE, to elevate it and bring best practice, and we do that through collaboration. So a lot of what is embedded in the formal meetings is collaboration, and some new information, tips, and strategies. So, I was thinking of Mr. Guttrow when I designed this slide. I know how much he likes his numbers, but if you look at this year's mentor program by the numbers, we had a total of one hundred and forty-nine participants. Seventy of those are mentors, seasoned veterans, and they oversaw seventy-nine proteges. And out of those proteges, we had thirty-eight academic classroom teachers, ten academic program teachers, that's your art, music, PE, tech engineering, librarians. We had four English learner educators. This is one of our smallest EL groups I think we've had in a while, ten special educators, six CVTE, CTE instructors, seven nurses, and four student support staff. So it was a nice variety of staff that came together for the mentor program. So, we wanted you to see some of the faces that are attached to the program, and this one we entitled "A Thousand Questions," just a short clip.
Hi, my name is Kristen Smith. I am an eighth-grade special education teacher at Southwest Middle School. I have been teaching there for ten years, I believe, and I think this is my third time mentoring, and it's always a different experience every time, but always an enjoyable one. I think the value that is found in mentoring really comes from having a person who is in the building, who has already been through this experience, and can, you know, be there to answer any questions. Teaching special ed can add a extra level of difficulty, because it's not just the teaching, but there's also paperwork and meetings to run. So I feel like there's a lot of information your first year, and it always helps to have somebody else.
Hi, my name's Matt Savard. I'm the seventh-grade special ed teacher over at Southwest. The mentor program had a lot of advantages, because it gives you somebody that you can actually go to, to ask questions, and as a first-year teacher, there are a thousand questions that you have, especially if you're in special ed, because there are so many different aspects to paperwork, that you look at it one way, and you thought it was the right answer, but then, when you actually look at it again, there are so many other answers that you could have put instead. So, just having the advantage of somebody who knows and has gone through the same, like, obstacles that you're going through, helps astronomically when you're going through it all.
So, two of our middle school special educators. There we go. So, even though we were just shy of a hundred and fifty participants this year, we used the Central Middle School auditorium for our formal meetings, and then we broke out into about eight or nine different locations in our JABA-like groups. They were a fantastic group, incredibly interactive, smiles throughout the entire year, including the beginning, the middle, and hopefully, we'll see in another week, those smiles continued. There was incredible positive sharing and collaboration. So, we wanted to make sure not everybody could be videotaped. I wanted to share with you a few other faces from the larger group. So, at the very top, we have a veteran mentor, Lori Canning, a Quincy High School math educator. She's actually been a part of our planning team in prior years, and out of that quote, you know, her focus was on how the mentor program accelerates the learning curve. And that's important. We want progress, and it's okay if it's slow and steady, but the ultimate goal is that we are moving our new hires forward. And I just loved how she said, "The mentor, through the mentor program, we're able to accelerate the learning curve, and help troubleshoot all of the unexpected things that come up, and help keep a new teacher emotionally centered." I love that, because she's thinking of her protege as a whole person, not just a task-oriented staff member. And then her protege, Dave Kamen, also in the math department, and what was really interesting, listening to him, is, you know, said a lot of the same things about support, and how wonderful Lori was, but he talked about the storytelling, and that's the importance of getting them in their JABA-like groups, going from whole group into their smaller groups. Because throughout the year, it doesn't matter when, and it even happens to veteran staff as well, something happens, and you feel vulnerable and self-conscious, and your mentor is the person that you can go to and get a nonjudgmental response. And he said what he liked most about the mentor program is the storytelling aspect. So, something happens to him, he thinks it's only happened to him, and then he hears from his mentor and his other veteran teachers, "Oh, that happens every year. Let me tell you how I handled it. Let me tell you what my approach was." And they actually share that storytelling, and I thought that was really an interesting perspective. So, in terms of measuring our goals, this is a year-long progress, so we really do see it as a journey, starting with the new professional staff orientation, where we see you, and you help us greet the new staff. In September, we actually have new staff start at any time during the year. So, when we start hiring them over the summer, we reach out to the principals or the program directors, and we say, "This person's on board. They've accepted the offer. Please be thinking of a mentor now," so that we can start them off on a, on the right foot, right at the beginning. But we will do that all throughout the year as well. It doesn't have to be just in September. So, they're all assigned a mentor. We hope that there's some communication before the first day, but the beauty of the administrative day, being the first day of a school with no students, they get a chance to connect, some of them for the first time. Then throughout the year, we have district, the formal mentor meetings, and we try to do two in the fall, two in the winter, and one at the end of the year, which we'll do our celebration next week. And then throughout October, through this time period, March, April, the mentors and the proteges are not only meeting in the formal meetings, but at their sites. Some of them are not at the same site, so they actually make time to connect. Sometimes they do it virtually. We encourage them to do it in person, and they continue to keep a mentor log, and that's a requirement that they have to do, both the protege and the mentor. They collaborate on this log, so that we can review the topics that they were discussing. This gives us information, and it, some of the topics we suggest, but it just helps do some record-keeping, and ensure that they're meeting once a month, twice a month, three times a month. Some of them see each other every day. And this goes all the way, as we do this, we collect other anecdotal information, which I'll share with you later, until we have our end-of-the-year celebration, which is a little fake-out, because it's not the end of the school year. They still have a month or two when we celebrate them. So, it's so important. There's a lot of focus on the new hires, obviously, and a lot of support that's put into place for them, but we can't forget the key component here, which is our mentors. And so, the principals and the program directors, they think very carefully about who would make an effective mentor, almost, almost a hundred percent of the time. I can't think of a time when they haven't. They have interviewed this new hire, so they have, they know their resume, they have a sense through the interview process of what their needs or weaknesses might be, and I, we encourage them to think of what mentor might be the best fit for them. And so, you've got a person who maintains that positive outlook, accepts the protege where they are, because we have some new hires that come in right out of college, and we have others who have experience, sometimes up to ten years, out in, either in the career, in the private sector, or they've been working at private or public schools in other districts. This mentor needs to make the time to meet with the person. They need to be able to go in and observe them, and have quality conversations, not just, "Hey, how you doing?" And we see that again and again when we meet with the mentors. The mentor, an effective mentor, not only does more listening than they do talking, and they kind of learn when they want to weigh in. They need to hear what their protege is saying. They share their own experiences. They model reflection and change, and growth, which I think is really important. And going back up to the top, probably the most important, is that they demonstrate enthusiasm, kindness, and attention to high standards for teaching. So, a lot happens at a mentor meeting. It's only about an hour and a half, a few times a year, and we have, we try to bring in guest speakers, have inspiring videos. We allow them to break out in their JABA-like groups, and have time together. But we also find out from orientation all the way through the year, if they have particular needs around their required, their job requirements, particularly around technology. Are they utilizing Aspen effectively? How about the educator evaluation system? Are they understanding, not just when the deadlines are, but what is quality evidence that they would upload into vector solutions? So we give them extra support there. And then, just to give you a sense, I'll have to look down, because I can't read. Can you just click through a couple of them? So, for instance, our first agenda in October, I can't read that, can't I, I can't read that. So, what we do is, we take the first half, the first half-hour of the meeting, and we have a special topic, based on what the feedback has been telling us. I try very hard to just welcome them, and then introduce a guest speaker, so that they get to know other members of the superintendent's leadership team. You can go to the next one. The November one was a big hit. Heather Wojcik and her family liaisons came in, and they did a presentation on how to utilize the translation tools, both for written and oral translations. That was a big hit. They did some role-playing. We got some great feedback on that. And then in January, can't read it, but I'm pretty sure January is usually about not just surviving, but thriving. So, you can feel really, research shows that in that January, February time, you can really find a dip, because the rosiness has worn off a little bit, and all the compliance, and all the demands are kind of hitting you, and you feel like, as a protege, you're doing some trial and error. And so, we do a lot in January, February to boost them up. And then in March, our special topic was culturally responsive teaching and learning. So, this is the other clip that I, we embedded, and we called it "Experience Matters."
Today, as a mentor, there's a quote that I absolutely love, and it is, "Your experiences become your expertise." And I have had the privilege of being in the Quincy Public Schools for thirty years as an educator, and the experiences that I bring with me to this program have been amazing. I've had the opportunity to be a mentor to, I believe, five proteges over the years, and I always reflect and think that, you know, proteges come to us with undergrad experience, or graduate school experience, and they come ready and prepared, but there's so much more. And it is an opportunity to be a mentor, to teach and to listen. The things we teach, you know, subject matter knowledge, and meeting diverse needs, and family engagement, and all of those things are wonderful, but it's little things that I think about on a daily basis, you know? Where's the copy paper? Or, you know, how do you fill out a form for report cards, or for a field trip? And I think this program allows for our proteges to ask those really important questions that are needed for day-to-day learning, but also to have that opportunity to build a relationship with someone who they know is going to be there for them in a nonjudgmental and really non-threatening way. So, it's an honor to be Janet Tobin's mentor. It's been an unbelievable experience for me, just as the others that I've had the opportunity to mentor. I have four years left of teaching, and I look forward to doing it again.
Hi, my name is Janet Tobin. I am a first-year teacher, and a first-grade teacher at Atherton-How. Being a part of the Quincy Public School System has been an honor. It's a privilege, and working with such an experienced teacher like Marisa herself has been a great experience. This program has helped me navigate all the aspects, it's helped me navigate all the aspects of teaching, and being able to go to Marisa for, you know, the big things, the small things, has been a great opportunity, and I look forward to keeping it going for the rest of this year, and keep building, and keeping this relationship for years to come.
So, the next slide that's going to come up is our reflection slide, and any of our district initiatives require that we, we don't rush through it, that we anticipate that we may have to shift and adjust, and bob and weave, and just make sure that we're meeting the needs of the participants in our program. So just to give you a few examples, we have planning meetings. The superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and other members of SLT will do walkthroughs and observations in the schools. We have DZ's annual induction and mentoring report that we fill out, but what's really key to the program is our exit tickets that we provide at the end of every, at the end of orientation, and at the end of every formal meeting. So, to the right is just an example. I'm sorry, it's very small, but this is an exit ticket that every protege and mentor will fill out at the end of the meeting, and our goal is, I give them a little description to remind them of what transpired for that meeting, what the topics were, and then what we're trying to gather from them is, in terms of the special topic, what kind of learning did they take away? Because it's not just fluff. These are things that we want them to learn, establish routines, take back into their schools, and so we do a little questioning about what they've learned and developed from the presentation, and then we always end, there's some other questions, and then we always end the presentation with, "What's next? What do you need next? What's in the short term? What's in the long term?" It could be something we provide during the mentor meeting, something that their mentor can provide them, something that their program director or their principal could provide. So, we just encourage, and they, this group really took advantage of it, and we try to also incorporate in every exit ticket, what were some of the wins, so that they knew, we wanted to reinforce that they were having wins throughout the year. They may be small, they may be large, and we wanted them to be able to share that. And then, this is just, it gives you a sense of the kind of data that the Department of Education collects from every district in Massachusetts, and I'm always happy to see that when they, when the topics that the state provides, we are, we are hitting all of them in the course of the school year, starting with our hiring, our induction, our orientation, and then the mentor program, and that we are providing targeted training or professional development, books, resources, and articles for them, release time for the mentors and the proteges, and a support team for them, either in the building that they're in, or maybe it's a district-wide building or a program, that they can meet with at least monthly, so that they feel like they're, they're part of that JABA-like group. And then, I had two other great, all of the members who participated were so awesome, but Chris Comer is part of our science department, and he shared some, he reflected on the program for us, and he really honed in on the importance of building a community, and he had a beautiful quote here, that he, he said, "I see my role as a mentor as helping to weave new teachers into the tapestry of our public schools." So, this idea, just like we want students to feel connected to their schools, we need our new hires to feel connected to their school, and their district, and their learning community. He is mentoring a new hire, Christina Cahill, in the science department, and she talked about how she was that student who was always too shy to ask for help, and that she feels that the mentor program specifically gave her an environment where it was low-risk, and you were encouraged to just be vulnerable, put it out there, and ask for help. So she was very enthusiastic about the program. And then lastly, there are just so many people to thank. This is, the induction program really, I think, aligns to the saying that it takes a village. These new hires meet so many people throughout the course of when they're applying and interviewing, ultimately hired, and then integrated into the district and their schools. So, you know, there's just, their mentors just do the bulk of the lift here, program directors and coordinators, principals and department heads do that daily support. Sometimes it is evaluative. That's the role of these people, but they are also part of that support and coaching. The superintendent and our leadership team is always there, not only to be a sounding board. Erin and Mara have been a sounding board for me for years, but Allison and Kim, whatever the mentor team might need, I can go and ask for help. School committee, community partners, you guys have been wonderful with our new hires, assistant principals, secretaries, custodians, colleagues, teammates, students, human resources, payroll, IT, all of these people impact a new hire in that first year, and ultimately throughout. But how we welcome them, and how they feel welcomed, makes a big difference when it comes to retention, and that is our ultimate goal. I also just want to give a special shout-out to Academic Program Director Larry Tagliari, who came to every mentor meeting with me. I tried to make him a co-chair, but he declined for now, but I think we're going to keep working on him, and he was a great support to me. Kelly Powers, who designed our presentation for tonight, she just She just did a fabulous job and had a lot of pictures that we could dip into. Richter Christopher Jr. and the central middle school staff, who let us use their classrooms at the end of the day. I also want to thank them as well. So it's been a terrific year, and I think you would, you should be very proud of your, of your staff. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. McGilley?
How long have we had the mentor program? How many years? When did it start?
I was a mentee, I did it, so I...
That's old.
Twenty-four years, at least.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Because I know I didn't have that.
You didn't have it? So the research shows that that's a key component to retaining staff. And I think that's why DESI has created these regulations, so that every district is trying to do some sort of common format.
I think it's been very helpful, obviously. I was going to say, so it sounded like as if the mentors, they're recruited or they are asked to volunteer? Or is it both?
Well, they are recruited and asked, but it is a volunteer position.
No reimbursement?
There is a small stipend.
There is a small stipend?
Yes. And goodies at every meeting.
Okay. It's, and it's three hours, approximately?
Five, five formal meetings, an hour and a half. And then they do have to do a minimum of ten touchpoints throughout the school year and record those. They all exceed that. They all exceed that. They're all meeting so much more frequently than that.
Great stuff, it's really good. This is good stuff. Thank you.
Mrs. McGilley?
I just really wanted to say thank you very much for the presentation. I love the mentor program. I think this is a fabulous program. I'm so glad that we do this. And I am still stuck on the fact... ...about her over the years. And I was able to read in her classroom, Read Across America Week, a couple times. And she is absolutely fabulous.
She has a gem.
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
This is a little off-subject, but I think it ties in a little bit. I think this is, this is great stuff. It is, it is no secret nationally, when you look at polling, I'm not talking about how our teachers in our district, but it's like eighty-five to ninety percent, both educators and journalists lean left. They consider themselves liberal. Fast forward to my kids in high school, and I remember the discussions at home. They knew where just about every teacher was on the presidential election, which was a very difficult election nationally in 2016, which I found very disturbing, quite honestly. And I want to tell the story, because I think I shouldn't leave this unsaid. I had a teacher, a lot of great teachers when I was at North Quincy High School. And I think this is more at the high school level, quite frankly. Her name was Bernice Mader. And she ran a political science course, American Government, I forget what they called it at the time, civics, whatever it may have been then. I know things are differently now. And at the time, Long Island Hospital was a hospital for the chronically ill. Out in, a lot of people, we talk about the bridge, but for a long time, a lot of people went out there to die. A lot of people were put out there that had nobody to take care of them. Bernice Mader decided to hold a presidential debate for the patients. So this is the, I'm dating myself, but the presidential election of 1980. So it was Ronald Reagan, Jimmy Carter, and John Anderson, for those that forget who the independent was. So I raised my hand, and I wanted to be the person to debate on behalf of Ronald Reagan. There was a kid in the room that wanted Jimmy Carter, and she flipped it. She made me, some of you may have heard this story. She made me do Jimmy Carter and made the other kid do Ronald Reagan. And it was a terrific teaching moment in that you've got to look at all sides of the issues. You've got to be objective, you've got to look at all the information, you've got to do your homework, and then come to a decision. So I hope at some point, and I don't know where the appropriate place is, with the principals and our, we're coming into another election cycle, let me say, next year? How do we get the word out that I don't really care what our teachers think about a certain candidate? I care about what our teachers think about the process, and what the kids should be taught about the process and civil discourse and so forth. So I don't know where that's appropriate. I raised it tonight because I thought, maybe it's part of that program, maybe it's not. If not, that's not the place. Maybe we find another, another spot for it. So I just think that, we talk a lot about, a lot of socialists in the last couple of years. I don't want this to get lost going into another presidential election year. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions. I'm thrilled to see the educator evaluation on here, to the degree that it is, because I think that's so difficult for a new teacher to find all that documentation, that they have to upload, and when it has to be uploaded and what it has to be. So I'm really thrilled that that's on there. But the advancing licensure, we should do something for teachers two and three years out, too, because the first year gets them evaluated, but it doesn't get them a professional license. And I don't know if we're doing enough to get, to help people with the DESI process. I don't know what we could do. But maybe we could offer some professional development around that to people a couple of years out, because I think it's important.
Yes, and there is...
I know a lot of people who think they're licensed.
Right. About licensure. And there is, our, within the first three years, they do have to continue their growth and development and recording that. It's called beyond the first year. And almost everybody has established such a strong rapport with their mentor that that continues unofficially.
Unofficially, yeah.
And if anyone needs it within their three years, the principals can reach out and ask for an official mentor.
It would be nice, I think it would just be nice if we, if they understood, we understand, that this is a new process, and they might not be able to. Give them some better communication about, you can reach out. Give them some communication. So that's the only other thing I wanted to say. And I think, Mayor Koch, the next item on the agenda may be more appropriate to discuss your last comment. The next item on the agenda is...
Good lead-in.
Good lead-in, is Kids Vote.
Thanks.
So, Ms. McGilley?
Absolutely. So that was a very good lead-in. So we did some research. We were asked to do some research on Kids Voting USA. So we did, Maddie and I have done a lot of digging into the website and finding out information. I actually used the program when I was a teacher, so I'm pretty familiar with it. And I actually have someone that I know pretty well who was involved in the organizing of the program back in the day when we used to do it. So, so we have some research. So it, it's a program, it's a nonpartisan program, voter education program. It's based out of Arizona, and it advertises itself as being committed to creating lifelong voting habits in children, increasing family communication about citizenship, and encouraging greater adult voter turnout. It was established in 1988. It moved around a few times. We did it, I think, until probably about 2006-ish, somewhere around there. 2007, I feel like, was when we, we moved away from it. In 2015, it moved back to Arizona and is now managed by the Arizona Foundation for Legal Services and Education. And so the couple of things that, I'm just sharing with you the basic research about the program, and then Maddie and I will share kind of what our takeaways were. But so the program basically has five components. It has a curriculum. The curriculum is free, so educators, I have the curriculum here if anybody wants to look at it. It, it has a K-8 curriculum and a 9-12. And it is free for any educator that goes on and registers for the site. I will say, the curriculum is pretty similar to what I used when I was in the classroom. So the last update is from 2005, is what it says. So I think that there are some things that are decent and some things that I think our, our teachers do a lot better in terms of the curriculum. But it does also, the other thing that you get as a part of Kids Vote is the mock election process. And so that could be paper ballots or a use of their program called Double Click Democracy, where you can set up, you know, your own election. It could be on an actual election in your community, or it could be on a poster contest, or you can use it, you know, in multiple different ways. It also has activities for families, that families can use with their children to teach them voting, you know, the process of voting. And then it says it has educator support through local affiliates, but I'll talk about the affiliates. And then it does offer, the website does offer research on the effectiveness of programs like Kids Vote and the impact that it has on future voting habits. So in order to get that, the support from an affiliate, we'd actually have to become an affiliate. So there are no affiliates in this area. So we, you know, we looked a couple of times. So we would have to become an affiliate. I would not recommend becoming an affiliate. So if you become an affiliate, you are basically the affiliate for this area, which means that if, you know, we, we're, not only would you have to organize all of the process for implementing Kids Vote for your own community, but other communities in the area that wanted to implement Kids Vote will go through you. So if we became the affiliate, and someone in Waymouth wanted to implement the kids voting, they, they would give them our contact information to set up their kids voting, you know, process. So I, you know, I would not recommend that. When we did it years ago, we worked with the city clerk's office, and that's where we got the, the voting machines and the mock ballots and things like that. And I think that if you ask people who did it before, that they would tell you that that was the thing that was really the most amount of work. I mean, the curriculum, you can just hand someone. But it's the organization of the mock election process that can be time-consuming. And Maddie has collected some information on that. I think a lot of our schools are doing mock elections now on their own, and technology has come so far that you really don't need to use a program like Double Click Democracy. I think you could do it fairly easily on your own. And so it also, if you become an affiliate, it gives you the opportunity for reduced costs and purchasing for supplies for mock elections, and then a national promotion of local efforts. So those are, those are the kinds of things. So just so you, the curriculum is, in terms of, it breaks it down K-2, 3-5, 6-8, 9-12. And in K-2, there are lessons, it's broken up into big categories, big buckets. So it's civic engagement and service learning, democracy and people, election and voting, and informed citizen. Those are the four big buckets, and there's multiple lessons within each kind of bucket. So teachers could pick and choose. I certainly used the lessons when I taught. Some of them are decent, some of them, I would say, mediocre. You know, and so that is the same, that, those four buckets are the same in 3-5 and 6-8. In 9-12, there are a few more sections. There's actually drama and art, a couple of lessons on drama and art on math, and that is like, like the electoral ballot process and counting votes and things like that. And then reading and writing are also part of the 9-12. So that's really kind of a quick overview of the curriculum. Maddie actually reached out to our own Quincy Public Schools teachers and spoke with them about what they're currently doing. And so I think she can share a little bit about that.
So we have a lot of very passionate history and social studies teachers. And in 2018, 2019, we transitioned over to the new Massachusetts Frameworks for History and Social Science. And Erin and I are very well-versed on them, not as much as our teachers are. And there is a renewed mission around civics learning. And it is pre-K to 12, it is all throughout. Our teachers know their areas. Erin and I know the scope and sequence for pre-K to 12. The very first standard for, they call it a practice standard, so that the dispositions, the skills, the way you think about things, is about demonstrating civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions, and about becoming a responsible participant in your community, your region, your state, your country as a citizen. And Mayor Koch, you're right. There is nowhere in the learning outcomes that encourage a teacher to create a model lesson around their own perspectives. So it's all about taking processes and systems, looking at the history and how we've moved forward. And the pre-K to 2 civic focus is, is a lot about the community. Your community, your neighborhood, your community, your city. And how respecting one another, you know, the many roles that people play in your community. But where really, and then 3-5 also has a civic focus. Grade three, very heavy, it's wonderful on Massachusetts as our home. Grade four goes into North American Geography and Peoples, so not so much of the civics there, but it continues into grade five when they go into the United States, history to the Civil War, so forth. I think the rubber really hits the road in middle school, because culminating in grade eight, they now have a mandatory civics project that they work on with their classmates under the direction of their teacher. And so these things are all, you know, key to getting the kids to understand the process. And I do have a couple of specific examples to share with you. So for the middle school level, they have world, ancient civilizations and world geography, six, seven. And then it really comes back, they've adapted the grade eight to be US government and civic life. So there is a lot that they focus on. All middle schools will hold a school-wide or grade-level elections during a presidential election year. There's a comprehensive unit on the Electoral College that they do at grade eight. There is a lot that they focus on around understanding fake news and what the media does to influence perceptions. And so part of being a good citizen is understanding that you need to sort through that. So they start doing that in middle school. I thought one of the wonderful examples, last, last fall, this past fall, at Broad Meadows, they aligned their student council elections with the state and federal elections. So you had that November 7th, November 8th time. Three to four weeks prior, students campaigned, and they went through the process of collecting signatures, getting approval from their administrators, having a teacher nominate them. They put up posters around the school. They had grade-level assemblies where they, where they stood up and they gave their speeches. And in class, they were learning about, it was very intentional. It was about, when you're listening to a candidate, how do they match with your values? How closely do they match with your values? And what are you looking for? And they took that all the way to where they went into the gymnasium and actually did a mock voting center. And they cast ballots, and it was, and it was collected. And Principal Marani was, said he was just blown away at the investment of the students and the staff. So the day before the state and federal, they did their student council elections, and they simulated the process, and they worked on that. So big kudos to Jen Clifford and Alicia Kane, who are the student council advisors at Broad Meadows. But each of the middle schools take advantage and do something around that. It may tie into the election. I think you're right, Mayor Koch. A presidential election has a huge focus, and it sounds like they all do something around voting for candidates. But I like the way that they're thinking outside of the box and bringing in the process throughout. And then in terms of their grade eight student design project, you know, it really is supposed to be about building civic knowledge at grade eight and how you might influence public opinion or public policy. But what's most important is the research and the process and the inquiry that they take to get to that. They may not actually get to the point where they make an impact, but they go through these steps as directed by their teacher. At the high school, you can imagine, there's extensive civic components, particularly at grade 10. But even in the, the World History 1 and 2, there is civic components, how civilizations impacted the democratic process. But most importantly, in grade 10, 11, the US history courses. The civic focus there is examining the causes and consequences of the Civil War, industrialization, immigration, the role the US played in World War I, early 20th century. They, they cover everything. And then our two department chairs mentioned that some of the components that they either share, some are a little customized. They have voter registration. It occurs at least once or twice a year at their buildings, and it's run by social studies teachers. So they actually get students registered to vote. US history courses include the history of voting rights in America and the struggle to expand those rights to all people. The curriculum covers the American elections in varying details, specifically around the presidential elections. I'm sorry, I'm looking down at my notes, but they gave me such examples. I'm sorry, I'm looking down at my notes, but they gave me such examples, very rich. They do a lot of talking about how elections are covered. And I have, they both, and actually both schools, may not, it's not going to be for all students, but they both participate in Harvard's outreach program on international politics, and of course, Student Senate Day at the State House. So there's numerous activities that they take place in, that our students can participate in. They simulate elections are held each June, simulated elections for their student council as well. Grade 10 sophomores also have a civics project. That civics project, it's interesting, they put a lot of work into the grade 8. There's a lot more requirements for what that project needs to look like. In grade 10, the idea is that the students put their skills to work in locally, in their, in a community initiative, a school initiative, a community initiative, and a state initiative. There are some wonderful resources Erin and I were commenting on. There are some things that we could potentially use in the kids' voting curriculum, but our teachers, beyond their textbooks, have found some tremendous resources. For instance, at the middle school, we rely heavily on some of the iCivics lessons and games that they set up for students. Learning for Justice, Facing History and Ourselves, the ADL, PBS Learning Media, and We Are Teachers are some of the ones that work best for our middle school social studies teachers. And for high school, they also, they rely on iCivics, the Circle Curriculum at Tufts Tisch School of Civic Life, Teaching for Democratic Alliance, the UCAL Promoting Democracy, and Rock the Vote, which some of you may be familiar with. So we feel very confident that what our schools, particularly our social studies teachers and our social studies and history department members are doing around their civics learning and the electoral process is probably just as good, if not better, than Kids Voting. But a teach, most every teacher likes to look at some new, new possible resources and see if there's something new or improved that they could implement. So I hope that gave you a sense of what we're doing.
I'm glad to hear that they start building a foundation early on with the community, because I think that's so critical, to understand that it starts in the community and it builds from there. A question on whether or not they talk about the U.S. Constitution, Declaration of Independence, and go into them in depth, and also the branches of government, their functions and...
Yeah. Primary sources are a big part of their, primary sources are a big part of their curricular resources that they incorporate.
Thank you.
Mr. Santoro?
No, I must say.
Mr. Gattuso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to apologize to everybody for being late. I cut a 5:30 train out of Boston, canceled, 5:55, canceled, red line. I got on a 5:55, and I got here when you saw me walk in. So, but on the, on the kids' voting, the, I think we're here, we're talking about it because a constituent asked us if we would reinstitute it. You know, it's, it's a sore spot for me because I lost the kids' voting to Jim Mulaney, and, and he bragged about it at Beechwood Knoll, and he should be proud of it. But I thought, I, I still think it's, it's a great exercise for the kids. I mean, first of all, I'm super proud and impressed of everything that you explained that we're doing, all of the curriculum. I think it's exceptional. You know, the one aspect was kind of the uniform ballot that we use every year that tabulates, and, and if we could do it and incorporate that somehow, the ballot that each of us cast on an annual basis, can we somehow incorporate that into it, whether it be for the high school, or the middle school, or anybody else? I understand everything that you say. It sounds like there's one organization that basically corners the market, that has curriculum and all of that, and that we have to be some kind of an affiliate and train everybody else, which is crazy. You know, that, I mean, that's, if, if, if we thought that the curriculum was worthwhile and we could adopt it and do all that stuff. And it's really the logistics of the voting, you know, and the tabulation of the voting to complement potentially our own curriculum that interests me, that, that I think has value. And, and, you know, there's so much you could do on your phone. There's probably a template that, you know, somehow, you know, Nikki could, could send the schools a template that we could just upload, and everybody could just do it on their phone, and it gets tabulated like that, and it's not a heavy lift. I just didn't know if that's, that is a mechanism. Not necessarily, I'm not necessarily saying we should subscribe to Kids Vote USA, because it sounds like we have the curriculum there. But if somehow, at some grade level somewhere, we could incorporate actually casting a vote on that, I would be supportive of that. I think that that's a great thing. I'm not saying that Kids Vote USA is where we need to go, because it sounds like we're doing all of the right things that we need to be doing. And I know, you know, my kids were beneficiaries of all those discussions and all of the great teachers that have talked about it. But that, that's where I was in seeing if there was any way to incorporate, adopt an actual ballot in the classroom to get there. So I'll leave it at that.
I, if I could, so I do think, you know, when I was speaking, and Maddie, we were speaking with people, I think that, you know, something that we could do, which I think would be a good idea, would be to put together a team of history teachers to, to maybe do something uniform for Quincy, not necessarily Kids Vote, but, I mean, we could certainly use pieces of it, because we have, the curriculum's free, you know, there's no cost. So, you know, we could certainly use pieces of it, but I think to pull together a group of Quincy teachers and do something and maybe partner, you know, with Nikki or something like that, you know, and, and put together, like, over the summer, put together our own kind of standard, you know, curriculum to talk about the election. I think that addresses, you know, what you're talking about, but then also possibly, you know, it does also, I think, address what you brought up earlier, Mr. Mayor, which is, you know, that if we, doing something kind of more standardized, because it shouldn't be about our own personal opinions. It should be about, you know, getting kids to make educated decisions based on understanding both sides of an issue. And so, so I think that if we could, you know, maybe put together a summer team or something like that, to, you know, with the different, you know, it may be elementary and middle, or elementary, middle, high, you know, and do some work on that, and maybe we have kind of something more standardized that we all do in the fall, would be what we would recommend.
Mrs. Hoobley.
Thank you. I absolutely love what you're doing with the civics program. I think it's, I think it's fabulous. One comment I just want to make is, after the last meeting of last year, I got a bunch of emails from 8th grade students doing the community projects, and they were, they were outstanding. They were amazing questions. I answered all of them as best as I could, but would have been great if we had had one more meeting, that I could have brought them back to everybody, and we could have all talked about it at a meeting, and that would have been great. And I couldn't do that because we didn't have any more meetings that year, in the year. So just wanted to put that out there. I loved getting them, loved answering them, but would have been great if everybody could have discussed them, or even maybe they could have came to our meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoobley. So I have a couple of questions and a comment. I agree, I actually went onsite and looked at the curriculum, and I thought it was pretty basic, actually. I didn't think it was all that well-developed, personally. I didn't look at it to the degree you did, but it looked pretty basic to me, like, people are doing much better stuff than that now. So I'm not surprised that it's old. I have a little question about the affiliate, though. I, I thought most affiliates were either a college or a 501(c)(3), and they weren't individual districts. There was some outside entity that was being the affiliate for that area.
Yeah, so all, all I could gather from it was that it said, if you want to become an affiliate, reach out, and that, there are, there's no one in this area at all.
No, and Quincy Votes reached out twice and hasn't heard back. They wanted to be an affiliate, but they have not heard back, so. I, I don't think that the place is fully manned. I mean, they were very nice to me when I called, because I said, I'm not an educator, but I'm interested, because I'm on the school committee. And they said, oh, go right ahead and sign up, because you sort of had a promise that you were an educator. But, but this, I think that, I, I don't think that they're functioning at the level that would be all that helpful right now. But I agree with Mr. Gattuso, but I have one little thing. I, I sort of would like to see an election about things that weren't real. Does that make sense to you? Like, weren't real. Like, I mean, I don't want to be influencing anybody about city council election in Quincy, or I don't want to have anybody's opinion come out. So I'd like to like maybe the John Adams election, you know, something like that. It's a real process, but I'm not sure I want it to be so local that it's, I'm just not, I don't know if I'd be comfortable with that. I'm not sure, like, you could convince me.
Well, I mean, a mock election is really about understanding the process.
Right, and that's all I want to talk about, the process. I don't want it to look like people are campaigning in our schools.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, that could be any, any way, you know...
Yeah, and I just, you know, certainly a national election, I'm fine with that. Maybe even a state election, a governor election. But I think when you get to a local thing, I, I find it a little, they might not be promoting me. No, I just find it a little, a little troublesome that that might be going on. So I love the fact that you would reach out to those people. I hate to burden anybody more. I know how hard people are working, and that curriculum is fairly new, and, you know, they're going through it, and I know that this curriculum, civic needs, K through 12, and I know that the Adams Presidential Center is going to be able to help with part of that, too, when it's online. So anyway, I just would feel not real comfortable if we were doing city council or something like that, personally. Mayor Koch.
Good leading, actually. Thank you, Emily. Yeah, in, in all the work that we're doing on the Adams Presidential Center, and I know the Assistant Superintendent is part of the advisory committee on that, you know, the Adams story is pretty remarkable, and I don't, I think everybody here is familiar with it. But for those watching on TV, for example, the Adams family is the only founding father family that could withstand today's standards. That's, that's pretty remarkable in itself. And I go back, again, learning history in, in school, Jefferson was the giant. Jefferson was a man of the peoples. Adams was a stuffy New Englander. And, you know, as you grow and you learn the truth, Jefferson was a Monticello, away from the people, with slaves. Adams lived on the side of the road and would engage people when he was in town on issues. So, so to your curriculum comments, Maddie, about the different levels, ancient civilization, U.S. history, I think we should be a little prejudiced about the Adams story in our curriculum in our schools. Our kids should know what happened right in their backyard firsthand, the contributions made by this family, and Hancock for that matter. So I don't mind us being a little bit prejudiced on that part of history. Thank you. Great, great presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the next item on our agenda is the St. Math, the S.T.?
S.T. Math, yes.
S.T. Math. I thought it was St. Math.
I will, I will explain. So good... Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to share this grant information with you tonight. And I hope after you see what the grant has to offer, you'll support and approve us moving forward with it. So in the fall, I found out about this S.T. Math Massachusetts Grant Opportunity that's offered through the 18 Foundation. And this is the same foundation that supports the Project Lead the Way. And at the time, I sat through a short presentation about the terms of the grant, as well as a showcase of this digital program. And I immediately thought about our deep dive into our MCAS data and our need in 5th and 6th grade. So the foundation encourages districts to start with one or two schools to begin with, and then expand from there, basically proving your commitment as you go to using the program. So the grant usually goes to elementary schools, but given our needs in 5 and 6, I thought it just made sense to reach out to Point Webster and Southwest, and to see if they were interested, and they jumped right on board. So before I go into the details of the grant, let me give you some information about S.T. Math. It is a K to 8 visual instructional Tier 1 program that uses spatial-temporal reasoning, that's where the S.T. comes from, to solve mathematical problems. So spatial-temporal reasoning is the ability to mentally move objects in space and time to solve problems. So when you're trying to pack the car up for vacation, and you've got lots of luggage and bags and boxes, and you're trying to get it all fit in there, you're using your spatial-temporal reasoning for that. So in S.T. Math, action is critical, and making mistakes is an opportunity to learn. So S.T. Math games include more than 35,000 puzzles that are interactive on different math topics, that cover all the state standards, and learning objectives that target key grade-level concepts and skills. So this all sounded really great, and then I saw the data. So the data shows that these schools that have been part of this grant, their MCAS scores, they have risen over 10 percentile points from their baseline year, which that baseline year is that, that year prior to starting S.T. Math. So again, I was still skeptical. It definitely sounded way too good to be true. So I did reach out to a teacher in Waymouth that was using the program in their schools, just to ask them, like, what they thought of the program. And they absolutely raved about it, and they, they were just starting their second year, and they had seen improvements in their very first year on their MCAS results, particularly with their fractions. They had, they had really struggled with the fractions section of the MCAS, and they saw great growth just that first year of using S.T. Math in their 3 to 5 classes. So by challenging students to figure out how to manipulate objects in space and sequence, students improve their understanding of math concepts. So with visual learning, students are better equipped to tackle unfamiliar math problems, recognize patterns, and build conceptual understanding. Without language barriers, the problem is accessible to all students regardless of their skill level or their language background. So this is going to be a game changer for our EL students, that, because there's little or no language required to solve these problems. For our students that can easily just get, you know, work through those steps and get the answers to problems, but lack that understanding of the actual concept, this is going to fill in those gaps as well. So as we take a look, I'm going to show you in just a minute a little example of it. Note the formative feedback being offered. Students see the consequences of each answer, helping them form and shape their understanding. Students don't just guess from a multiple-choice, you know, answer, and they don't just get answers wrong and then wonder why. They encounter opportunities to fine-tune their understanding, and in this case, in this 5th grade example, they are relating how multiplying whole numbers times unit fractions relate to a repeated addition. So we'll take a look. And all of these tasks, the goal is to get Gigi, who's the penguin, either across the screen, or in this case, we want to get Gigi on the hoverboard for this particular example. So in all of these, there's a green button that after the student solves whatever task they're asked to do, will light up, and they can click on it, and it will check their answer. Very often, at the start of something like this, they might have no experience with this at all, and that, you know, is, is kind of the point for them to kind of figure it out on their own. So set up just like a video game. They start to click, and you'll notice how we see that light up at the bottom, and that guides me to that hoverboard where I can now move it. So the students start to learn that. If they're not quite sure what's going on, they go and just give it a try, and it's going to give them information that's going to lead them forward in their understanding. So if we have a student that doesn't really know even the beginning of multiplying a whole number times a fraction, they might, you know, put the answer on 2 here, and then now you'll notice this is lit up, because I've done something, and I can check my answer. And then it's showing them where this comes from. So we're seeing that, that 1/4th tells us we're going to break up that number line into 4ths. And of course, I made it that time. I didn't mean to make it. I should have been, I should have been paying attention to the question. But it shows them that. So if, for some reason, hopefully it will work on the first time, let's just pick 1 this time around, so we can show you what happens when they miss it. Oh my God, I did it again. So silly. See, I just automatically know the answers. There we go. All right. There we go, times 8. It gives me the exact same problem again. So if the students are paying attention to it, and they're, they're thinking about, well, what did that mean? I can then go back and do the problem again, and figure out where it's going to land, and put it in there, and then see again how this all comes to fruition. We're breaking it into thirds, and I know I need to do those eight jumps. And then it continues to progress as we go through, and brings them to further levels. So this grant includes a 3- So this grant includes a three-year site license for both buildings, an education success manager to help us successfully roll out the program, as well as three PD sessions each year tailored to the individual building needs. So the 1-8 Foundation wants this to be a successful implementation. So there's a lot of supports that are built in over this three years. So what is our commitment? We need dedicated teacher champions that will set and carry out the usage expectations, which is 90 minutes per week, and lead the team of teachers that are using S.T. Math. They will also ensure all fifth and sixth graders are using the program. So this is a tier one program, but it's not a core program. So our fifth graders will still be using illustrative mathematics and the sixth grade will still be using big ideas. But what they will do, fifth grade has a nice big block of time. So they actually have that time in their math block to incorporate over the course of a week, the 90 minutes that's required. Sixth grade schedules are shorter. So they wouldn't have that time within their math block, but they have agreed to use their SSB time three days a week to be able to hit those requirements. So like I said, this is a big commitment. And when I reached out to Point Webster, Principal Christine Barrett jumped right on board and then reached out to Megan Quigley in fifth grade and Jason Roslonik in sixth grade to be our teacher champions. Southwest, same thing. Once I talked to Principal Courtney Mitchell, she was all in and reached out to Ashley Howe in fifth grade and Megan Sweet in sixth grade to be our teacher champions in that building. So if approved, we will be joining 59 districts and 244 schools that are already part of this grant program. So let's take a look at the numbers. So if we did not have this grant, a one-year license to cover fifth and sixth grade at Point Webster would be $12,000. And the three onsite PD days would be over $7,000. So between the two buildings, it would cost us $39,000. With the grant, they do ask for a participation fee of $3,500 from each building each year, and that cost would just be $7,000. And I just wanted to end with one more example of this program so that you could see what it looks like with sixth grade and how it takes those abstract and really tackles those abstract topics as well. So if we look down here at exponents, and you'll see how this changes a little bit as it gets into the sixth grade concept. So this one is on exponents. We know this because I'm telling you that. The students wouldn't necessarily know that. So in the beginning, they might look at this one dot and see that it's becoming three and just say, okay, I'm going to click on three. Is that really all there is to it? And they're going to find out for this first one, yes, that's all there is to it. And Gigi gets across. Okay. Now this next one, because I know how this works. I know they're looking for this to be times two and then times two again because we're dealing with exponents. But the students aren't going to think of this right out of the gate. If this is the first time they've seen it, they're going to come and they're going to click on times four. And we'll see that this configuration is different, but it is still the correct number. So Gigi is actually going to get across. But it shows the students that it is a different configuration for this piece because now it's not. So now we have one dot going into eight dots. We don't have times eight. So hopefully in sixth grade, they're thinking two times four. And I'm going to actually click on the four first so that you can see what happens here. And you can see the configuration doesn't work. And now I can't click on anything else because again, this is about exponents. The students don't necessarily know this at the time, but we know that it's going to be repeat multiplication here. So if I click on this again, I don't get eight. I get way more than that. But what they've also added is this back button. So I don't have to click here knowing that it's wrong. I can go back and try again. So it gives them that opportunity to keep trying until they make this picture work. So now if I click on, hopefully they think of groups of two, they try the two. This now looks a lot better when I'm trying to match it up. And again, I don't have any other option but to continue to use that two. And then I start to see that pattern. And it's about seeing those patterns, understanding it, and eventually we'll link to, you know, exponents and using the actual form of exponents as it, as it guides them through. And then you can see it, it does get more challenging as they go, but they learn that pattern. So I hope after seeing what the program has to offer and all that this, this grant has to offer as well, you will support and approve us moving forward with this opportunity. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Mr. Ghetra?
So we got this grant.
We have this grant.
Congratulations. So who, who gave you the grant? Where did the grant come from?
It was the, the 1-8 Foundation.
1-8 Foundation, okay. So you, so you, you heard about it, you did the research, you validated with other schools. You saw the numbers. Everybody said, yeah, and so we have it. So is, is it just fifth and sixth grade that universally everybody that uses it applies it in fifth and sixth? Or is it, or did we pick those grades because of past M?
We actually did. So when I started learning about this, it's the, the 1-8 Foundation does it from K to six, even though the program is K to eight. And their rationale is it does, you know, Gigi, it goes all the way through. And by eighth grade, the kids are a little like, ah, Penguin, you know, it's not quite, you know, they're too cool for that. So they did their research and they said, really, you know, it, it works really well with, with K to six. So that's what they offer the grant for. So if we had applied for, you know, it for an elementary school, we would be able to use it K to four, K to five, whatnot. You'd, the way the grant works is you start with one or two schools. And again, looking at the data, knowing that the focus was on fifth and sixth grade this year, we didn't have math interventionist in the fifth grade, like there was so many reasons.
So when will we know? Will it be next year as MCAS? Is that it? So are we?
Next year, we'll start it.
We'll start it next year, okay.
Yep.
And, and what will make you think that it's this as opposed to the math interventionist, as opposed to something else? What, or, because you're going to see it all meshed together and you're going to credit something.
Well, we'll be able to see, because this will just be targeted in the fifth and sixth grade. Whereas the MCAS or MAP data is going to be grades two and up.
Can you, when you're going through it, can, if you get it, can you skip through the explanation if the kids get it? Or do they have to sit through all of that explanation?
It is geared to them like they take, you know, like a, it, it puts them where they belong in terms of where their understanding is. So not everybody's working on the same thing every day. So if we all started together, you know, two weeks later, students are going to be at different spots depending on how they do.
And, and getting in and seeing math concepts that they don't know, like you just explained, is that other parts of the curriculum do the same thing, drop it in at you? Or why is this taught that way? You know what I mean? You go in and you don't know. You're looking at it and you don't know.
Well, it's.
Is this different than other bits of the curriculum?
Well, it, it definitely is because it sets up that growth mindset of like mistakes are okay. We're going to give things a try, having them figure it out versus just being told, you know, when we multiply a whole number by a fraction, this is what we're going to do. Here's the algorithm. They get that understanding and they're finding it out for themselves. So when they, when they do that, they own that information. And it's going to connect back to what they do in the classroom. So even if they see it out of order, they're going to say, oh, wait, that's when Gigi did this. Or when they get to something else, they're going to be like, wait, this is what we did, you know, last week or.
And so it's, it's, what does it cost us over three years? Thirty-five hundred?
It would be $39,000 for one year.
If we didn't have the grant?
If we didn't have the grant, correct. In just those two schools.
So each of the, of course, the next three years, each year, you're going to evaluate it and say, hey, do we want to keep this? Or do we not want to keep this? And then?
Yep. Yep, we have the grant for three years, but we can, if we didn't feel it was valuable, we certainly wouldn't have to continue with it.
So if after the first year, you, you don't see improvements, what, do you still continue the grant? Is that?
I think we'd have to evaluate, I mean, if we really didn't see anything or if things went down.
Usually you do the grant for the three years, right? I mean, are there any grants that we go through, partway through their lifecycle and we, we stop? Or we just accept the grant and do the program?
I would say we, I think if it was, something wasn't effective, we wouldn't do it. Like, so, you know, there's certainly been grants before that we have done in the past that, you know, we went through it and we were like, oh, that, that didn't work for us. And then we would not, you know, we would not reapply. We wouldn't go forward.
But you'd still do the life of the grant, the three years?
I mean, I think it would depend. I think if, if it really wasn't working, we would pull out.
Yeah.
We, we wouldn't waste everyone's time.
I got you.
Because we're looking, we're looking at 90 minutes a week for these students. If we, I mean, if teachers came back from both buildings and said like, this isn't doing it.
Got it. Wow, so to apply that to every fifth and sixth grade, well, we'll have to see what the numbers are, right? We'll do the pilot, you'll report back, we'll. Interesting, great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? I have, I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions. Are you sure? So my concern is, is there any teacher involvement when this is going on? Or is the kid just on a computer by the room, by themselves?
No, the teacher is, yes. I mean, the teacher is.
The teacher is floating around the room, making sure kids are?
Yes, because if any, there'll be lots of trainings to, to learn how to, you know, if a student gets frustrated and doesn't know like how to lead them in that direction without telling them, oh, yeah, you should click here, you want to do this, this is what you want to do. So that's where all that training comes in to make sure that it's successful so that those teachers. So any teacher that's a part of that will be trained. So like with the sixth grade, they do that during their SSB block. So all the teachers do the SSB block. And since we're doing all sixth grade teachers, they'll all need to be trained to know how to do it. Because if, you know, I'm a social studies teacher, but I have my homeroom during SSB block, I'm going to be doing S.T. Math on, say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So I'll need to be trained as well to know the program.
And the three onsite PD days, are they full days or is it somebody comes and works next to you? Like, what kind of PD is it?
Yes. That's a great question. I don't know if they're full day, days, but I do know, again, depending on what they need. So part of it would be looking at data. Some of those PD days, they would pull the teachers and look at, at some of the data. And then there'd also be, you know, if they needed help like in the moment or with students, they would certainly do that as well. So it's really, they said it was really opened up to whatever the individual school needs. So those PD days, we could combine and do them together, you know, Point Webster and Southwest at the same time if that worked out for us to do. Or we could keep it separate if their needs were different. So it's really tailored to the school and what they need after that initial like, how do we use the program? How do we, how do we find the data? How do we pull the data? Because there'll be, there'll be data that we get from this program. So it's not just going to be the MCAS data that we look at. It's going to be how the students are doing it. How many puzzles are they doing in a week? How are they progressing? If there's students that aren't progressing, why is that? All of that, we have that support.
And is any of the PD before school begins, like in the summer?
They want that. But we are, we did talk to them about the fact that we wouldn't be able to have that. But both principals have agreed to that first principal day that they have to use a 90-minute block of that time to have those meetings. So there's two different things. There's like the PD time and then there's like the training time. So that 90-minute training happens prior to, because they want the students to get started right away. They want like the first two weeks of school. They want the kids in, they want the routine, they want it started. So in, in some districts, they do, you know, do like an August time. But I told them upfront that obviously we didn't have that ability with the teachers, so.
Okay. And my, my last question is, and I think this is where Mr. Ghetra was going. Eventually, that's just for grade five and six. And if you were doing K through six, would it be more money to use the curriculum?
That is a great question.
Or is it just by sight?
Excuse me. I, I think, I, it does based on numbers. So I don't know like if we were like to do Marshall, which is such a bigger school, if there would be a bigger amount. But the $12,000 of what it costs versus the 35, the 3,500 is what we put into it. I don't know if that would go up a little bit if we had a bigger school, if that makes sense.
It does. And if we wanted to expand it, I mean, we could be getting into something quite pricey here. Going, going down the road, that's what I'm thinking, you know? Because those are probably our smaller populations or probably our smaller fifth and sixth grade populations.
Yep, but that, that cost is based like, again, the, the, traditionally it's used in elementary schools. I kind of, you know, went in the side door and said, this is where it would really matter for us right now to try it out. So that pricing would be like for an elementary school. Doing K to four, because they want everyone involved. They want all the students. They don't want it just rolled out in a school and just do it for like grades two and three. They want everybody being a part of it.
And these people have been around for a while? And what about like kids who are in the REACH program that are getting some sort of enrichment? Do they need this? What if a kid didn't need it? Or do all kids need it?
Well, I would, I absolutely believe that all kids need it. Because again, when you're talking about students, when we think about math, it's about the understanding. So a lot of times, students that can get the answer don't necessarily have the understanding. So for some of those students that, I dare say, and I don't like saying this, but like the good math kids or the, you know, the kids that always excel at math can sometimes struggle with a program like this because they're not used to that understanding piece. So it's building both because both things are important. The answer is important, but it's really, that understanding is so important. Because if not, then years down the road, you're like, how did I do this? What was I supposed to do? Do I change the thing? Do I flip the number? Do I, you know, all of those tricks that sometimes students are taught. If they can go back to the understanding of what it is, then they can think about it and, and get back to.
That works as the math gets more, more complex. I understand that that works a lot better than just kids who can look at the thing and get the answer if they can figure out the process. Well, I'm excited for you. I think it's a big, it's a big thing to bite off. We've got a lot of new stuff going on. I like the way we've rolled out curriculum before. I hope it will be similar because I think we've had the teachers really, really involved and them really evaluating it. And I, I'd like to give that, that kind of respect back to our educators as well. So I hope, you know, I'm excited. Mr. Magoli and then Ms. Hugley.
I'm excited about the fact that we're rolling out fifth and sixth grade. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, traditionally, that's been our weakest area in math in the MCAS. Am I correct?
Yes.
So I think that's a great, a great movement on your part to target those two grades. And hopefully, it's going to turn things around. Thank you.
Ms. Hugley.
Thank you. Is there any part of this would be like an at-home component that kids could, could do this at home? And is there any part of this that would be like a parent handout question, kind of so the parents would know what their students, what their kids are doing with this program?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yes. We definitely let the parents know that this was happening. They can do it at home with the grant. The grant specifically wants to make sure that we are in control of making sure they get their 90 minutes in. So the teachers, you know, again, part of the, the whole process was that agreement of we're going to make sure that during the school day, they can get it in. But the students absolutely can access it more at home. Yep. Yep, some districts that don't use this grant but use S.T. Math, use it like as a hallmark. You know, the kids go home and use it 15 minutes a night or something like that, but.
And will the parent part of it, is it like translatable? We'll make sure that goes out in the language that the parents will be able to read in it? Thank you.
Yes, I will. I'd like to call the Policy Subcommittee Meeting to order, April 26th. On our agenda is the QPS School Year Calendar for 2023, 2024. This is a subcommittee meeting. And members of this, of this subcommittee are encouraged to speak first. Other members of the, of the school committee can then have the opportunity to provide input. After we have our discussion, a roll, a roll call will be made and a recommendation will be made and sent. and a recommendation will be made and sent to the Full School Committee on May 3 for further discussion. We have any members who would like to speak to this who are on the committee, on the subcommittee? Okay. Ms. Santoro and Ms. Lebo? No, I know, I asked them first. Now.
Your all set?
Yep.
We discussed this in subcommittee.
Microphones. Am I on? I first like to apologize to our parents and children, students that are here, having to wait so long to be heard. So thank you for your patience and coming. I do want to put into the record that as of 7:44, there's a petition online and 1,083 people have signed it to get Lunar New Year off as a school holiday. I will, again, on May 3, present that number just to keep you abreast as to how the community is voting. I've heard from people that on the committee that there is an excused absence already built into Aspen if a student wants to take that day off. However, you do have to understand there's a difference between an excused absence and perfect attendance. Many of these kids want perfect attendance. An excused absence only relieves you from the grade of being penalized on a grade. But attendance is a legal document, whether you're in school or not. And when you attain perfect attendance, it means you're there every day, not excused. I also want to bring up the fact that this is a very important matter to me